Yeah, Hagi. I can't noha noya. Repeat, yaate. Okay, we still have to work for quorum. Di did, um, January, December, Yanda, Dashen. Or January, Yanda, we had passed the resolution here to continue virtual meetings and then to count votes online. Those people that are online to vote on resolutions here to be a part of it. But, um, ade, ya di, the, um, the COVID, uh, legislation for COVID Yankee, they ended it. It got lifted. So we're no longer under emergency status, no longer under the COVID legislation. So due to that, we have to go back to what Title 26 says about quorum. So we cannot count anybody that's online as part of the quorum here anymore. We have to have 25 people in person. So we're going back to in-person. Nikhe, I thought we were already back to in-person. But chapters that were closed or weren't doing, um, in-person meetings, they have to go back to in-person meetings now. So a now, we have to have 25 people here with us. Although, if you're gonna vote on resolutions, we can't count the people that are online. We can count them that they're here listening to the meeting and participate, but we can't count them as voters that are here, um, on resolutions. Only those that are here present with us will be the ones to vote on these resolutions. A hot eh shahi. But council delegate, eh ya, they're dropping a legislation that, um, for the council session that started today. They're dropping a legislation that covers the council delegate because they're under Title 2. Eh, ajja, they're dropping a legislation to say that they want to continue doing virtual meetings and, um, um, voting online to be counted. So ade ya, nikhe kodo chapters, ike nikhe, we're under Title 26. So in order for us to continue virtual meetings and counting people that are online to vote on resolutions here at the chapter, we're gonna have to come up with a resolution to say so too. So because I think a lot of our online people, they do like that. They want to attend our chapter meetings, but sometimes they're not here, but they're voters and they want to have a say on the resolutions. So in order for that to happen, we have to, um, come up with a resolution from here to say that that's what we want too, not just for the council delegates, but for the chapter houses out here too. So eh, hot eh shahi. So today, today, we're gonna have to have 25 people here and those, um, anybody that is present that's a voter can, um, vote on any resolution that we're gonna discuss today. Okay, so to pass the time, um, we need about four or five more people to make 25. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and give, um, Choice Wireless, that's through NTUA, right? Um, he's gonna do a presentation for us. So eh, butin shahatolis. And Derek or Dendrick? Dendrick James, holiadi shahiye. Ha yeah, welcome him.
Tess, Tess. Oh, yaate, thank you, everybody, thank you, council and community members for inviting me out here. And it's, uh, I was looking at your agenda, it's very well organized. I've been to a couple of chapter meetings and they don't have everything on their agenda and they don't have printouts. So you guys have a nice leadership here, Joni. I'm with Choice NTUA Wireless for broadband services. Sheh, Dendrick Jones, jine sheh, tachi nineshle, tapaha bashen chien, tohaglini dashache, tet nisanli dashanelle, kealane, dan nashah. So I come out from Chinli, Arizona, and I'll be talking about our services that we provide here on the reservation. Reason we want to do this is just to bring awareness of our free internet. So I don't know if people have been hearing that on the radio, on KTNN, or if they've seen it on the news. So this is gonna be regarding that. We'll go ahead and keep the questions till the end and we'll go ahead and finish this presentation. So we'll go ahead and go to the first slide. Can everybody hear me pretty good? Alrighty. So the first slide that we're gonna be covering would be the last mile carrier. So this is gonna be regarding to the equipment on top of the tower. So those equipments on top do have cellphone and broadband services. So with the cellphone, you're gonna have your texting, your calling and using that on your phone. As for the broadband technology, that's going to be for the internet to the home. And there's just a little bit of description that we have here. We'll go to the next slide. The mile, middle mile carrier. So I don't know if everybody been seeing these fiber lines, they're curled up in that black on. So that's gonna be our newer fiber line. And the structure of the tower is gonna be also, um, middle mile carrier. So there's other carriers like cellular one that own their towers. And there's lines that go from the telephone poles to get the fiber from the data center to the tower. So we do work with outside organizations that do own towers to get our services on there. So that's gonna be the difference between the last mile, which is the equipment on the actual tower, and middle miles gonna be the structure of the tower and the lines. Our next slide, please. Thank you. So here's gonna be the Affordable Connectivity Program. It is a government-funded program to offer free or reduced internet services for a family household. The discount's gonna be $75 and that's how much our max plan is going to be. The max plan, we'll go ahead and go more in depth in a later slide, but that 75 value discount will go towards the highest plan that we have available. It is one per, um, household and it is gonna take care of for a whole month. So for 30 days, it'll take care of the monthly cost for that. Next slide. A little bit more about the Affordable Connectivity Program. Here are some of the benefits that you would have to receive to get the free internet. Here in Arizona, the most popular one would be access. That's gonna fall underneath Medicaid. We do work with Utah and New Mexico Medicaid Services. The most popular one's been the SSI, our retirement. So we do have our elders who come in, provide their award letter stating that they are receiving that benefit from the government. Some college students are applying for FAFSA that would fall underneath Pell Grant. If you have little ones in the household that are in elementary and are doing the free lunch program, we could use their benefits for this free internet. A lot of people, we do get, a lot of people will come to our booth, they tell us, we don't get any benefits like that. So it could be based off of income. So one person in a household working, they would make $29,160 and that's the cutoff point that they can use as an income. As you can see, when you add a person, you are gonna add the value up to $10,280. So if you have three people in the household working and combined all their income, it should be underneath $49,720. And to apply for the Affordable Connectivity Program, these would be the documents you would bring to us at the store, or if you see a setup out on the side of the road with a green tent. It would be two forms of ID via driver license, your ID, and your social security card. Award letter would be what we were explaining earlier in the slide, is if you're getting retirement or SSI, beginning of the month, they should be sending you a letter stating that you are participating in the program and this is how much you're gonna be getting each month. So we need that award letter. If you're getting SNAP, same thing, they're gonna tell you how long you're gonna be on that program and when the deposit's gonna be made into your direct deposit. Proof of residency, we do understand here on the reservation, we all don't have utility, so we included voter's registration card. We do want the physical address, no PO box, or a letter from the chapter house. So you don't need all three, you would just need one of the three. So it's an NTUA bill, voter's registration card, or a letter from the chapter house. With the broadband services, this is a little bit of a diagram of the equipment that we'll be installing in the house. Outside of the house, there's a J-arm. That modem does have to look towards the tower. So if you have a big hill, it's not gonna work. So you need a good inline of sight from the tower, which is gonna be that modem satellite dish looking. We do supply the J-arm and if you follow that black cord, it's gonna be a Cat 5 cable. That Cat 5 cable is designed for extreme heat and below frostbite. So it is designed for the elements here out in the reservation. And if you follow that Cat 5 cable, it's gonna go inside the house. There's gonna be a small little PoE injector. That, that PoE injector is going to power the modem outside along with the router inside. The router is gonna be the one with the antennas, the bunny ear looking one. That's where you're gonna connect your devices to, so everybody in the household can use the internet. Earlier, I did mention that we do have a max plan, which is gonna be the $64.99 a month. So if you don't get any benefits from the government or you make too much money, this would be underneath the standard broadband plans that we offer. And the minimum plan is gonna be the $44.99. As explained, that's designed for one or two people and it's kind of making online payments, email, Facebook, just very light usage. The $64.99 is gonna be more into like your gamers. If you like Netflix, Hulu, Disney Plus, those streaming services, then you'd fall underneath that $64.99 plan. We don't do any credit checks, no limitations on cap and data usage. This is one of our recent pictures that we did, um, take at with our stores. So we do have friendly faces. If you see them on here, they're gonna be at the store. I did not include my fellow coworker, Amin. We are the mobile team, so you'll see our green tent on the side of the road. Our customer care number is going to be the 2273. We do proud, we do proud ourselves being Navajo-owned and Navajo proud. So we do have, Tess, Tess, we do have a, a number that I believe is, if you push number two, you speak with somebody on the reservation. We do have three representatives at our call center in Chinli that do speak Navajo. So if you have the elder or if you want to be translated into Navajo, you just request to speak with somebody who speaks Navajo. Yeah, thank you. And we'll go ahead and open the floor to a few questions. I believe we have enough people to start the meeting, so we'll, we'll make it a quick one. Any, uh, any questions? Alrighty, I handed out some handouts, I'll leave some up here as well. So if you have any questions, I gave all the chapter members up here my business card and my cellphone. I do work 8:25 Monday through Friday and the best form of communication with me is through email. And just leave a good contact number and I can give you a call. Yeah, thank you.
I can't have, um, Mr. Jones, for, um, giving us the presentation on, on the, um, broadband, right? Broadband. I had to think. Ah yeah, okay, um, we have hit quorum and I would like to ask, um, all of you that we maintain the quorum all the way through adjournment. Because if we lose quorum, we have to stop the meeting. All right, um, I call this meeting to order at 11:13 PM daylight savings times. And I would like to ask, um, Shamak Jamie, if you can pray for us. Okay, thank you. Although, the next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Di agenda, nda jahe, shi nda nosi. Although, I need a motion. Jamie. Notice Dean motions. Second. Your name?
Colbert Sherman.
Colbert, C-O-L-B-E-R-T? Sherman. Okay, and you're a voter of Tapiqin? Okay, I don't know all my voters, only the regular ones that come, so, thank you, Colbert. All right. Although, agenda nda nosi, do you want, um, highlight it, um, read through it?
Okay, through the agenda here, we have, uh, let me see if I can share my screen for those that are online as well. All right, for the agenda, we have preliminaries, or I'm sorry, it's Tapiqin chapter meeting in person and call in, telecommunication is provided, preliminaries, meeting called order, invocation, approval of the agenda, approval of the regular meeting minutes for June 12, 2023, presentations by council delegate Herman Daniels, Legislative District, Legislative Assistant, um, Elsie Small Canyon grazing representative Jerry HB Gay, NTUA presentation, NTUA representative, Kianta Unified School District, Glenda Fuller, and then Coconino County, five, District Five, Tuba City Office, Lisa Ching. Old business, we have none. New business, we have, um, accepting and approving the, resolution number one is accepting and approving the June budget, June 2023 budget report. Number two is accepting and approving the monthly cash receipts in the amount of $687.74. And then number three is approving and supporting the budget transfer of $328.80 and 80 cents from Fund 01-6401 Space Rentals to Fund 01-66515, which is banking services charges, and to Fund 01-6300 Office Supplies of $229.86 to cover the shortfalls that were not anticipated. Number four is approving and supporting the housing discretionary assistance to eligible applicants in the amount of $450. Number five is approving and supporting the subject tank cleaning services assistance applicants, so in the amount of $250. Number six is approving and supporting the budget transfer of $379 from fund account to 40-6352 Purchases Foods to Fund 40-6390 Office Supplies and Expenses. And this was to cover the shortfalls that were, to date, that were not anticipated. Number seven is approving and supporting the budget transfer of $1,963.51 from Fund 236414 Waste Disposal Collection of $1,000 and Fund 23-6410 Telephone Expense $963.51. And to Fund 23-6314 Natural Gas, Propane of $1,963.51 to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. Number eight. Uh, number eight is approving and supporting the step salary increase for the Tapiqin chapter manager. Number nine is approving and supporting Glenda Fuller as the new Navajo Nation, Johnson O'Malley, Kianta Unified School District, Indian Education Committee at Large Member representing Shantu and Tapiqin chapters. Number 10 is approving and supporting the budget transfer of 1,600, I'm sorry, $1,267.98 from fund account 10-668008, I'm sorry, training to and tuition fees to fund 10-62-10-6202 accepting, uh, I'm sorry, travel expenses, $1,267.91 to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. And then number 11 is open, then you have reports from the chapter officials and then the senior center, head start veterans, and then other distinct designated representatives. Announcements, we have St. Mary's Food Distribution on Monday, July 24th, and chapter closures that we see is none. And then upcoming scheduled meetings, we have the planning meeting in August on the 7th. We have the chapter meeting, which is today. The district grazing meeting was on, is on July 11th. And then permities meetings was on July 12th. The Western Agency Grazing Meetings, which is today at 10:09 AM. And then the CLUPC is scheduled for July 28, 2023 at the Tapiqin Chapter and adjournment.
Okay, uh, hold on. Um, the next chapter meeting is gonna be August 14th. And then the next district grazing meeting is gonna be on August 15th. And then permities is August 16th. With those corrections made, any other questions, comments, concerns, corrections that you see? Huh? Permities meeting. Um, the district grazing is gonna be at, not just on, right? Next one, Vicky? Permity, eh, alka? Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Church?
Church, yeah. I figured that, you know, we have a meeting and Scott would do something, but we're trying to get a petition regarding to that, uh, that new RV park that's gonna be built, so.
My question was, you know, we don't get these agendas, so we don't want to miss a meeting. So even Yenni, cause some of these people here regarding to that, uh, that we're trying to get the agenda so we can start, you know, get the ball rolling regarding that we denied that all this progress is gonna be going on over there. And I look in here that we're not even written on here, so. Later meeting, that's, they didn't tell us to be over here or nothing with next meeting. So we don't even know what the agenda is, so. But right now, you know, I look at this and we look, you know, I need, and what's on the agenda here? It seems like it's not regarding to anything, you know, what we came for and I just wondered that, you know? It seems like we're just kinda, you know, we're, trying to look for, you know, anyways, I let, uh, I'll just be here all day, you know? But regarding to, to, you know, what's on the agenda, I like to be, you know, notified and want to be there, you know? If there's nothing to do pertaining to what we're here for, you know? I got else things to do, like I had to go down to Phoenix, take care of some business, but I'm here. I came from Vegas yesterday, I have business over there too, so. If there's nothing pertaining here, I'm wasting my time. I should have been in Phoenix right now. I'm wasting gas for nothing, you know? I'm retired and all that, so, you know, I'm not working, but I get SSI, you know? But as far as this day, I don't even know what's going on, you know?
Okay, um, regarding that, eh ya, um, you guys attended the Clubsey meeting. Um, during the Clubsey meeting, you were told that it has to start from the district grazing committee. Although, it comes back to the Clubsey and then it comes to the planning and then to the, to the chapter meeting. That, those are the steps that it has to take. So now, you did go to the district grazing meeting. So now, at the end of the month is the next Clubsey meeting. You'll have to contact Halroy, um, for the next step. Um, eh, odal, what was decided at Clubsey? That they have to go there and then come to the chapter planning meeting? Okay. So at Clubsey, it was decided that you'll go to the district grazing meeting and then you'll come to the next planning meeting. We already had our planning meeting. So the next planning meeting is August. August 7th. August 7th is when you bring this to us with the resolution. Although, that's when we take, take it and then put it a part of the agenda for that August chapter meeting. But I would like to urge, my shana wants chicken. We have, um, we provide lunch, so we're gonna have chicken today. So eh, um, I would like to encourage you to continue to stay because a lot of these other things do pertain, um, to things that happen here in this community too. So, um, Dida, Shana, Dennis, keep this with you. Don't lose it, cuz those are originals. Auto Planning Meeting, August seventh, go. That's when you bring that to us. Okay? All right, with that, let's go to the Approval of the Agenda. All those in favor, raise your hands. Oppose? Who? Oh, he's just talking. You already voted. Abstain? Okay, the Approval of the Agenda passes with twenty-seven approvals, zero opposed, one abstained. Chair's not voting. Oh, well, I did vote, never mind. Okay, Approval of the Regular Meeting Minutes from June twelve, two thousand twenty-three. We usually have a copy of the Meeting Minutes as a part of your agenda. But we're having, um, some issues with our printer up here. What I can have our Secretary of Treasury do is just give you a, a overview of what the meeting was about.
Okay, the Chapter Meeting Minutes for June twelve, two thousand twenty-three, uh, was via teleconference and else in person, telecommunications information is provided. Um, currently, we, meeting was called to order at eleven forty-two. Um, vote call was not needed. The implication was provided by Billy Goodman Jr., Approval of the Agenda, Motion to Approve by Billy, and then second by Loretta, and vote was approved, twenty-eight, zero opposed, and zero abstained. Approval of the last regular Chapter Meeting Minutes for May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion was approved by Earl Spro, second by Jim Sinan Janine. Billy Goodman made a question regarding the penicillin, uh, can be made at the store, or made a comment, uh, stating that the penicillin can be stolen, uh, sold from the stores. And then, uh, approval of that was twenty-five, zero opposed, and five abstained. Presentation, Council Delegate provided his written report. Legislative Assistant provided her written report. And then Grazing Representative provided his report. And basically went over the, uh, information regarding penicillin, and then also that the... Uh, let's see here. And then basically going over the, uh, tally counts and, um, also the ability for, uh, wranglers being needed, so. Then, um, questions regarding vaccines and if the grazing official charges, grazing official does charge, if he's taking those vaccines. Or, and then also, uh, Jim provided a recommendation to the community to purchase, uh, a, a shoot for the community. Okay, moving on to all the new business, accepting and approving the May two thousand twenty-three Budget Report. Uh, Secretary Curly reads the Budget Report into the Record. Motion by Ruth Dotson, second by Priscilla Sosie. And then vote was to approve by twenty-nine, zero abstained, and zero, uh, four abstained. Number two is accepting and approving the Monthly Cash Receipt Deposits for May two thousand twenty-three in the amount of one thousand three hundred twenty dollars and fifty-three cents as budgeted. Motion by Billy Goodman Jr., second by Jamie Otis Dean. Vote thirty-two approve, zero opposed, and two abstained. Number three is accepting and approving the Student Financial Assistance to the Eligible Applicant in accordance to the Tawpikin, uh, Student Financial Assistance Policies. Uh, vote was approved, vote, motion was, uh, by Jamie Otis Dean, second by Priscilla Sosie. Uh, approved of twenty-nine, opposed zero, abstained five. Number four was supporting the Budget Transfer of one, uh, fourteen dollars and twenty cents. Um, this was to cover the shortfalls that were not anticipated. Motion by Jamie Otis Dean, second by Priscilla Sosie. And vote is thirty approve, zero abstained, and four opposed, uh, I'm sorry. Was zero opposed and four abstained. And then number five is approving the Budget Transfer for fifteen hundred dollars for Chapter Renovations to cover the traveling expenses for the ARPA and Intuway funded projects. Then vote, vote was twenty-nine in favor, one opposed, then four abstained. Uh, number six is approving the Step Increase for the Office Assistant from BQ five-eight-nine-A to BQ five-eight-B for the successful completion of the ninety-day introductory period, and then to do Budget Transfer to accommodate for the increase. Uh, motion by Priscilla Sosie, second by Jamie Otis Dean. Vote is twenty-six approve, zero abstained, and eight oppose, eight abstained, I'm sorry, and zero opposed. Um, TBK, the Supporting of the Nomination Head Start Replaced the Nomination Head Start Building to Benefit the, Benefit of Providing Head Start Services. Uh, motion by Alice McClure, Mary Alice McClure, second by Ruth Douglas. Vote was thirty approved and zero opposed, and four abstained. Approving the Budget Transfer of two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, uh, to the Space Rentals and Vehicle Repairs. This was to cover the costs that were not anticipated. Uh, Jamie Otis Dean motion, second by Ruth Douglas. And then thirty-one approve and zero opposed, and three abstained. Approving the Supporting Resolution for number, uh, zero-one-zero-eight-two-three in active relating to the Law and Order Health, Education, Human Services Budget and Finance and Applicative Committees of the Nomination Council approving the Amendments of the Nomination Veterans Trust Funds Act, uh, Title Twelve of the Nomination Code in Sections one-one-seven-one to one-one-seven-eight. And motion was by Billy Goodman Jr., and second by Alfred T.C. Vote was twenty-nine approve, zero abstained, um, zero opposed, and five abstained. Then the reports, uh, reports provided by the Chapter President, providing none. Also Vice President, providing none, but extending their thanks to the public for attending the Chapter Meeting. And then Chapter Secretary, again, providing none, and also, um, appreciation to the community, and then, again, Earl Spro providing his appreciation to the community, then veterans as well. Then announcements, and then scheduled meetings, which have already passed. And then adjournment, which was motion by Jamie Otis Dean, second by Billy Goodman Jr., with approved of twenty-five, zero opposed, and zero abstained.
Okay, thank you, uh, Delart. Jiaj konde nhecha. Meeting Minutes nhecha, nang stragi. Although, the only thing I see missing on there is just that adjournment. The time, eh, ya, yeah, so we'll put that in. Um, hold on. Okay, we'll, um, put in the time. Uh, do you have a motion? For the Approval of the, um, Regular Meeting Minutes from June twelve? No? We haven't yet. We, I had him read it first because you don't have copies. Yeah, we couldn't make copies because of printer over here is, um, giving us, um, technical difficulties. So, I need a motion. Okay, Priscilla? Sosie? Second? Hebe Kennocha? Jamie? Otis Dean? Questions, comments, concerns?
I don't even know why this community, Uta, Uta, Naha, Nafa, Nafala. They, they clearly were concerned. We are back, Shana, we are in grazing area. I don't have ever given that, I'm just a child. I'm not a child, I'm a kid, yes. Eh, I am concerned about for this, the Catholic energy. I'm a child, I'm in the, I'm struggling. There's no one I can meet. Even in that, I'm not a kid. So, eh, that, oh, you're a nice kid. But to that, eh, I don't have a child, I'm not a child. Eh, I will not, I will not, I will not, I will not, I will not. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Hey, she no, no, yeah, you must have a heart, come in there, eh, 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 eh. But ladies, true, yeah, take it, okay? Eh, I, July, eh, twenty-eighth, I'm not a listener. So, I'm over again, you know? I don't want to go I don't want to go I don't want to go so we must go home
Okay. Adrian?
Resolution, there has not been a resolution been made. At Clotsey Meeting today, yeah, there were two things that were brought up, but it was told that we can't do anything like that first. As far as the tours that are concerned that I know about, there are two tours. Eggshell Tours and then Eggshell Arch Tours. There are two families that have that here. And from my understanding, from the Parks and Rec that is in Page, from my understanding is that those two tours are on trial basis for a year here in this community. How the tours have started up but on July 28th we're sitting down with the tour that is in Page, plus, we're gonna sit down with DOJ because Parks and Rec, they're operating under an agreement that has since expired. That agreement was that this whole area from Page to the Monument Valley and Parks and Rec had issue back in 1960 something. But the agreement, it expired as far as we know. So, we want to sit down with the Parks and Rec and Parks and Recreation so I need to sit down and say, hey, do you business who holds permits, who uses the land? Do you? I don't do you? Do you? Do you? Do you? No, I don't that's what's gonna happen on July 28th, hopefully, because they keep saying there will be. But we do have that. According some things are out of our control. We make the possibility of meetings. So, regardless of the reason you came, please stay because I don't know what this meeting is about. Any other comments?
The chapter decision, being more proactive, you know, telling these two people, even from the chapter administration, we have to go to meetings. If you guys were open, open, I don't the community posted. I'm very vocal on a lot of things. I don't want to be open.
Okay. As far as announcements are made, it is like you said, on the Facebook page, on the website, and then it's all posted outside. I don't want to change the agenda. I just see at the end, to always state it, when the next meeting is. So, they're well informed. People come to me and say, when is the next meeting? And I tell them. So, I respect that. We make it available to them wherever they're busy.
Is it an open meeting? DOJ, the first, I see couple, I wouldn't want to sit through this.
That's our fiscal year meeting schedule. And I don't have to be in their meetings as well. I'm part of the administration. And that's it, that's it. So, I don't want to be there. I don't have any meaning. I'm here, talking to you about a lot of things that are happening, and then I'm making my reports on all the things that we're trying to do. It's not my job to tell you to come to these meetings, or make you come to these meetings, I'm here, they bought me. So, most of the time, if you guys don't hear my reports, that's not my mission. That's I'm used by not being here. So, I don't have a sense of that. I'm very, very transparent, and I'm very much, pretty much accountable. And my officials are as well. Before, a lot of these things used to move down behind closed doors. I'm here, the chapter officials and the administration, they decide what to do on everything. They, although everything comes important, even personality. We don't have to put personalities before the community. That's something that should be decided in-house. But, in order for us to be transparent, we put it before the community. So, I don't have a sense of that. Every year, we come out with a fiscal year meeting schedule. We make it available, the first meeting of the year. So, it's included in the agenda, it's posted on our website. Oh, some of you don't have access to the internet, but you're more than welcome to come to the desk over here and request a copy of our meeting schedule for the fiscal year. So, I don't, we already say how we're, our plan to do, what we are planning to do, what days our chapter meetings are going to be at the beginning of the fiscal year. In September, we're gonna be announcing another resolution. I'm telling you what days all our meetings are going to be. And then, we make it known that all our meetings are usually the first Monday and the second Mondays of every month. I don't have issue with that during the week meetings on a Wednesday. It's due to liability issues. Who's gonna be held responsible? The chapter is right. So, because the chapter does not have the coverages during the weekends, we cannot have our meetings during the weekends. The chapter, they only cover during the weekdays. So, it's basically for your safety and for your benefit as a community number two, so a tenured chapter meeting that we cover. I'm not saying this in the head, I'm just saying that if it happens, that's the reason why we have to have our meetings on the weekdays. So, a lot of chapters but as far as the chapter meetings go, I'm not a part of it. I'm not an elected official. But, if you have questions regarding to resolutions, if you look at the agenda, the agenda tells you also who is the sponsor of the resolutions that are on the agenda. So, it is a big part that says, the chapter administration, you're more than welcome to come over and ask me what that resolution depends on. And I will reply at how the agenda is. I don't hide anything. I just, you know, what we have to do is we have to ensure we follow protocol, but also be reminded that we can't openly discuss personal information of anyone. And then, sometimes people get mad at us when they try to ask us for something to wear, we can't take that, anyone. And that, again, due to the Napa Nations policy. Even with our officials, some of the people, where our president lives, or our secretary, we can't provide that information. Because if we do that, and somebody goes and turns around, these people, who's gonna be held responsible? It's gonna be us. They apologize for doing that. We're gonna be liable for that. So, I don't have a sense of that. But our door is always open. When I first came down, I always said, these doors weren't open to anybody. I don't know how to do this, I'm not saying I've always been a free speech person, but when the head of jail is still in the double, you only have that little two windows to speak to, that's how it was. But since then, we've changed, we've changed, we've changed and so forth. But, like I said, I always call you guys, you guys are more than welcome to come over and ask me a question. And, I'm almost always here. Most of the time, majority of the time, I'm here. But for the past two weeks, I took a vacation. And sometimes, I have to do that in order to re-align me, just whatever, and so that I can continue what I'm doing because it's a stressful job that I have. Or if I needed, we have a patient, we call them. But I try my best to work on each other. So, I don't have a sense of that. But I'm here most of the time. I'm not always out there doing other things, I'm always here. And then, I try to keep my staff well informed about all the things that are happening. I don't know for what reason, but everybody that comes always says, I wanna speak to the chapter. So, when I come out, the questions have been answered by my offices. And so, I don't have a sense of that. But, I just want everybody to understand, the chapter meetings have nothing to do with that's where your elected official is. You need to be prepared to the administration, you have, I can answer your questions. So, you can be whatever necessary. I don't have a sense of that.
Thank you. I don't understand. So, I wanna be more part of the chapter. I would not be people so, I don't know. I'd just like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Because this contains, contains to be a community. So, I should call on just case. And I thank you, you know, for attending and coming, day by day. So, with that, we're gonna go ahead and call for the approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 4th to June 12th. All votes in favor, raise your hand. I'm standing. Okay, now we come down to our reports. Is Shiyaj Herman on the? Okay. Elsie? Shada, Ms. Elsie, are you ready to give a report?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I got it. I was trying to turn down the other laptop, I'm listening in on the summer session on that site too, so. Reports. Delegate Daniels. Craig, it's Upikin Intergenerational Conference, 10th Annual. They did their dance with the Apache crown dancers. Craig, the meeting is not like, media, largest of the many, Geraldine Chi. Emergency declaration, COVID. Emergency declaration. COVID. I don't, face mask. It's more of a protection for you as it is for others. Mass, we're just, oh, the api. So, we really wanna encourage that everybody take care of themselves. That the weather is really hot, stay hydrated, and just make sure that you check in on each other. SYP. It's a privilege to be a part of that, to give back to your community. I don't think meetings, Navo Nation Council, all this week, summer session, meetings, every day, 10 o'clock, starting. They're doing introductions. Delegate Daniel, he's gonna go ahead and give his introduction. Three legislations. It's gonna be introduced sometime this week. Intergenerational Conference. It's an accomplishment for the community, and I just wanna really show my appreciation to Upikin staff, the manager, and the officials. It's a lot of work, as well as the community who took part in the committee meetings. It's a lot of work, it's dedication, taking out of your own personal time to take part in these meetings. Knowledge is power. So, you know, it's best just to, you know, if you're curious about something, you're wanting to get updates, you know, take it upon yourself to call the chapter, or, you know, shoot them an email, and get updated that way, you know. It's an effort on both ends. You wanna learn about something, you know, make that extra step to take initiation and call in on it. Chapter meetings, planning meetings, regular meetings, grazing meetings, you know, they're usually posted. According to Navo Nation law, there's supposed to be a 48-hour notice put up for the community to let them know that that particular meeting is gonna take place. So, you guys have every right to ask where it is. Usually, you know, there's different ways that they post it, either on a community bulletin board, or right there on the chapter meeting walls, websites. I've seen people use social media to post announcements like that. Next month, August. Usually, they have it beginning of August. They're planning on that. 8.8 million to each delegate region. Navo Nation Council, allocated. It's still being finalized. Shanta, Upikin AI proposals, yeah, they used, and then it went through DOJ review, and Upikin B is gonna be, I believe they're asking for 2.4 million. That's gonna be part of the legislation this coming week. So, if you guys are interested in that, you know, you're more than welcome to listen in on the summer session meetings. Shanta Hotel. Listen in on the summer session meetings, I don't, Shanta, eh, Shanta Hotel, three point. Form, three point four, three point eight million, dish, and I, I get those numbers mixed up, but, eh, the, uh, just, um, in, uh, niche. I don't, oh, Jay, to, don't, not, on, eh, on, the, still with D C D and DOJ review. Um, I'll, she, she, I, but, it mean, the, you know, there's always something that comes up, and, uh, whether it's miscommunication, or. They're not following through with certain signatures and supporting documents, eh, that's what's holding them back. A call, out of the eight point eight million, probably about five, I would say, a little over five million, that's, um, already spoken for. A call, we, we really wanna make sure that Delegate Daniels regions of the four chapters that he's representing, that they actually get, um. A piece of that eight point eight million, um, crazy, like, the, may, yeah, the, uh, should be split evenly, happening, then. Um, that was just an opinion, it wasn't a set decision, uh, this was still at a discretion of delegate, for each delegate. Of course, it's really important that, um, each chapter go and have their plans ready, any particular projects. Uh, which, you know, there's a lot of paperwork and a lot of research that goes into that. According, uh, land, which are all, land surveys, um, cost estimates, they, then, gee, uh, so, Jen, those need to be taken care of. Out of right of ways, archaeological clearances, um, cultural reports, eh, doll, that takes a lot of time, and. There's only one department with Navajo Nation, so just imagine how many of the hundred and ten chapters, how many of them have submitted requests like that? A call, a lot of these departments are backlog, and, um, so it's best to get things in early, stay on top of things, and. You know, I just really wanna commend Upikin chapter and Shanta chapter for staying on top of those. Um, you guys are really progressive on that, you know, you, you guys are very involved with a lot of these paperwork and projects that are going forth. By, hey, uh, you see, um, crazy, Delegate Daniels, don't show, wow, hi, Nick, uh, um, Joe, eh, I, you know, it's. I think, so, yeah, the, you, Nick, though, um, you know, he, and, uh, nice, no, I, yes, he, uh, uh, call, that's, it's a really good praise and. Acknowledgement right there, uh, call, once these take place, you know, um, encumbered by September thirty, twenty twenty-four, hadn't it? Although that's next year, it's gonna come really fast, so, um, of all these proposal projects that were submitted. We just wanna make sure that everyone takes part in it, and that, you know, it's beneficial to, to the community at large. So with that being said, we'll continue to keep you guys updated on any, um, status updates that come out from the Fiscal Recovery Fund's office from Navajo Nation. I don't, crazy, um, uh, me, uh, um, D C B, though, A S C, there are two, three people, actually, that, um, resigned. A call, uh, A S C, the oversight for the chapters, um, there's only one person in that office now, and her name is Elaine Benali. Um, eh, she, she's only an office specialist, but she's gonna go ahead and find out who is gonna temporarily, um, take over Calvin Sosie and Sarah Harrison's position. So that chapters, um, continue to move forth with their projects, their budgets, and everything that's involved with chapter operations. Uh, call, eh, she, um, hopefully, she's gonna get on the line, I did let her know about this meeting, so that she can provide her own update on that. Uh, call, um. I don't, with anything else, you know, I'll make sure to pass that along as it comes through my email, oh, um, I for those, the four chapters. And if there's any questions that you guys have, you know, feel free to, um, pass that along to the chapter or the officials, and I can relate that to Delegate Daniels. Um, for me, you know, I just make sure that he stays on top of the meetings that's taking place, any reports that need to go in. And, uh, whatever the community's concerns are, eh, oxygen, because, no, she, uh, this is an everyday thing for me, uh, there's some meetings that start at seven in the morning, and. Some that end until almost close to ten o'clock at night, it's just not Monday through Friday, it's also on weekends, holidays, evenings, so. Um, it's, it's a lot of work, is what I can say, but, um, just, eh, you know, I'm doing this for the four communities, and. I just wanna send my apologies to you all, um, when I don't appear in person, it's because I live out in Tucson, although my work site is, um. Set with Shanta chapter, um, I don't get reimbursed on a lot of these meetings or travels, uh, call, um. The, oh, you, best, or, she, you know, the, uh, 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 again, you know, my heart is in this for the community, and I'm sure a lot of the officials and the chapter staff, eh, don't, that, eh. They're working from the goodness of their heart, so, um, a lot of these negativity and lack of support, while it be, oh, uh, oh, cash, cheat, oh. You know, it, it kind of brings our morale down, but if you guys, you know, just go in and just. A little praise is what takes us a long way, so I just really wanna, um, bring that up again, you know, thank you to everyone who is. In attendance at the meeting, um, I, yeah, I, you seen, so, uh, um, and hopefully, you know, we get the chapters to initiate in action. To continue with hybrid meetings, um, that can only take place in order to amend Title Twenty-Six, so that chapters can continue to. Do both in, in person and virtual attendance, uh, call, um, eh, she, uh, once we get a lot of those resolutions in place. Maybe one of the delegates will go and sponsor that at Navajo Nation level, and, uh, once that takes place, I'll go ahead and update you guys on that. I don't, um, your phone number, eight nine two eight five three zero seven five five six, eh, that's my work cell from Navajo Nation, and my, um. Email address, eh, eh, small canyon at Navajo dash N S N dot gov, call, yeah, nah, um. And I just really wanna thank you, thank you to Madam Chair, Vice President, Secretary Treasurer, Grazing Official, and Community Members, yeah, yeah, ma. I don't, have a good day, you guys, back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Shada, huh, he, he, uh, so, uh, I don't, uh, call, um, Herman Daniels, the report again, he, uh, he, trust me, eh, gee, eh, those, uh. I don't, and, uh, if you have any questions, you can, um. Bring him to us, or his information is on there, too, uh, his cellphone, his, um, email address, and you can board. Um, your questions to him, if you have any questions. Okay, the, yeah, Naidos, Kedeshne, well, on the report. Uh, yeah, had, Shada, um, Elsie, for giving us a report, and then we did, um, give the, the people here, um. A copy of Herman's, um, report, too, uh, call, yeah. Uh, Che, yeah, uh, we'll have the grazing representative.
Thank you, yeah, uh, branding and tally, eh, yeah. Almost done, maybe three or four, eh, yeah, every time you go visit them, eh, they're not home. Eh, eh, uh, don't, uh, to sign, eh, they, eh, yeah, uh, but, I, I, some are not signing yet. What that, eh, gee, yeah, oh, they're not home. They've all, cause, uh, uh, don't turn it in, so. Uh, the, the, I, I, uh, don't, that, it, let, eh, eh, that, eh, that, eh, that, eh, that, uh, unless, unless, here. Yeah, I, I don't, if I don't brand it, I just put it there, eh, what, uh, cause, uh, so, we were asked, we were told to. Watch and brand. If you let us brand, we'll brand, eh, what, eh, I didn't have help, so, eh, it went out, all, all good, and, eh, now, stay in, that, eh, yeah. Some kids come out, and they wanted, they wanted to help, so, what, uh, I'm, see, hey, I don't, this, it, oh, the, but, it, I'll, I, it, I, 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 yeah. I don't know, someday, see, we're ready, though, that, no, eh, that, 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 I noticed that some of them, uh, do, a Sunday, and, eh. So, I'm, like, I'm, uh, the, I, 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 yeah, the, I'm, uh, the, we caught one family doing that, so, eh, what, eh? Uh, quite, the, we, cause, the, eh, it, I, 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 so, we had to go and recount it, and turn it in as that. I don't, uh, overgrazing, get it, uh, the, queer, it's only one family is overgrazing by ninety. So those had to be turned in, I don't know what Navajo Nation, uh, Department of Ag is gonna do. I'm just gonna put a note on there for the last twenty years, I've been telling them to reduce, but, mm-mm. No way, Jose, gee, so, eh, eh, what, eh, other than that, everything is okay, you know, go, eh, yeah. Uh, but, I, I, because, right now, Joe, it's too hot, yeah, go, so, your lifestyle, they need more water than ever. So keep them hydrated, uh, let it, hold, yeah, but, uh, what, uh, they, yeah, be, uh, so, eh, yeah, but, I, 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 see, the, uh, I, I, it's, and, oh, yeah, it, uh. Uh, uh, so, make sure that supplement feeding, that, uh, the hay, and all that, I know hay are high. Uh, con, the, love, and, yeah, and, uh, do, how, eh, some are cheaper. Eh, with, uh, twenty-two, that's, in a flag, I mean, that, yeah, to, the city, go, yeah, I don't know about N P, I know they have some, some. But they're, they're around the same, but, almost the same price, so if you have good trailer, bring a whole lot, so safer, without, though. I don't, your, shot, she, though, eh, bad, uh, bad, uh, uh, so, I, I, so, I don't, some medicines that are over the counter purchased, yeah, eh, yeah, then, eh. This, uh, uh, the, uh, she, uh, they, yeah, they can sell it to me, credit, uh, like, uh. Or penicillin, gee, I see, uh, they, they, so, some places, uh, only the veterinarian can. Have it and can get those shots in for whatever is wrong with this, even, I, it's, like, I, take it to the vet, hold that, okay, uh, they'll see what. Causing them to be that way, eh, uh, uh, call, not, eh, oh, I, 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 so, I see, it, it, it's kind of hard to do it. I don't, uh, transfer, yeah, though, eh, the only thing that's helped, the hell, the map backup is, uh, conservation plan, though, that, net, oh, to, 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 I, 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 I. I know some people were calling to do their conservation plan as a group. Did, uh, that, to, you, that, but, don't, you know, uh, I, I, so, those are the ones that are, uh, bananas, who, that, yeah, now, that, next, the court system, eh, yeah. We only deal with a recommendation on that site, uh, so, uh, none, eh, some place, uh, we're told, maybe, uh, we had to come appear before the court, uh, Supreme Court, uh, just, oh. So, eh, what, eh, I don't, uh, transfer, that, like, it, that's, uh, and, that, let, John, he, that, eh, it, oh, he, it, oh, oh, what, uh, and, that, eh, to, to, you, those, and, eh. I don't, we cannot bring. Another trend, uh, trend, a grazing permit from other area, because she, Black Mesa, District One, District Two. District, uh, one and three, eh, I, eh, District Eight, eh, oh, you, uh, hold on, now, we're dealing with one, which, and, be, too. They wanna bring it into Black Mesa, so we say, no, we can't do that, leave it behind, so, eh, eh, what, eh? I don't, eh, uh, uh, if you have some, uh, 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 they, what, eh, we find out, we'll confiscate all the branding. Eh, eh, what, eh, non-state brand, eh, is not allowed, eh, state brand, again, eh, eh, nah, man, yes, and, eh, no, eh, it can be confiscated. Eh, they go, wonder, eh, yeah, the Rangers, eh, did, eh, yeah, without, eh, they, so, eh, what, eh? Only, only, that, has, on, eh, be, eh, issue brand, again, nothing, oh, oh. Then put your state brand on, without, eh, eh, otherwise, eh, then, I, eh, yeah, with just a state brand, eh, though, eh, yeah. So, eh, yeah, I, 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 some people have, uh, uh, R M U, eh, they, uh, can, uh, I, 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 so, they have their own bylaws. Procedures, eh, yeah, yeah, and, uh, she, I, eh, yeah, you can, not, eh, there, is, eh, so, a lot of people are, uh, uh, they, like, I, I, that, I, that, I, that's what, a lot of one. Plan out, the, what, uh, what, eh, eh, go, I, 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 see, so, eh, eh, what, eh, still have a lot of, uh, wild cows, wild horses. Um, I say, eh, yeah, oh, yeah, and, yeah, 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 it, uh, horse run-up, uh, the, it's, go, that, oh, she, get rid of all the, uh, horses, gee, though. There are a lot of wild horses, uh, fair horses, eh, what, eh, Kelly, that, oh, you, no, of, call, the, lead, oh, had, uh, had, uh, on canyon, eh. I mean, only one place they goes, um, through that canyon, uh, so, the, bull, that, oh, you, don't, that, eh, no, so. Tom's was after some bulls, they, uh, Navajo Canyon, but there's seven bulls, uh, eh, no, so, eh, if you can catch them, brand them, get rid of them. So, uh, if you can catch them, bring them, get rid of them. Don't get caught doing it. So, uh, so, uh, horse run up, concerning horse run up. Uh, resolution, all we had to do is update it and then go from there. Uh, horse entrapment. To get into where the barn is. So, uh, so, take care, take care of your lifestyle and same as yourself. Don't get dehydrated out there, have water with you all the time. So, uh, thank you.
Although the next one is Kiento.
How we can add that to chandler, can you treat my? So, um, this July twenty-seventh to the thirty, and, um, we're gonna have another event, so those got phone number, I gave you guys. The management, the ninety-eight, eight-six, ninety-five year. If you find, I'm going over there, call. And said in the phone, I'm not, I'm sure how they're going. But what, what she can probably ask you is, they're trying, they're wanting to sign a code, because they have what they call the, the firewood project, and then they have a house and bean project. Um, but we're also working with them on seeing if they can bring a load out, so people can, if they got them here. And what they're saying, most likely they'll bring it out in a cold post, and if people want, they can saw it up and load it up and take it. I just wanted that to make that available to you. Although, the other thing that, um, I was mentioning is the article, they, um, have home renovations, which won't be able to get proposed. So, we, we're looking at, um, renovating thirty homes, so far, I've only received like under five applications. So if you want renovations to your home, um, pick up an application for that, that's open to all registered owners in this chapter. Although, um, the other thing. There's another thing that I think that's mostly here, they just, so the thirty homes that we're gonna focus on, well, being given, uh, um, being a project of eleven thousand dollars per home. So if you think that, in that cost, if you want your whole roof to be done, there will be like an actual cost of eleven thousand. Or if you want your manager's price or your boarder code for that reflection, I need for you guys to apply for the house. So, uh, so if you want, uh, if you want, so, one of the biggest things that we're getting is the bathroom. When they did the bathroom, we thought, they put those small little toilets in there. Some people are wanting the bigger, the one that were, you're sitting on like a chair, plates, and stuff like that, we can work on doing that for you. We're just asking for you to apply for that. So, although, we're going into a new fiscal year, it feels like we're at the last quarter of our year. Um, July, August, September, at the end of September, it's, um, end of the year. So, uh, we're gonna be looking at doing some budget work sessions in here, just kind of giving you an idea of what, um, our money is, or we need to. So, uh, look out for a flyer for that. And I always try to, I only have like three or four people. But, um, I'm pretty sure we'll probably go over a, 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 a projected budget, um, next year. And then, there are any figures we need, if you don't have, uh, no other questions. China, you might, you might be part of that. Pick up, pick up. Uh, like I said, if you have any questions, definitely please ask me. Um, we have all our information on our chapter website. Um, we also have a chapter cell phone, um, I didn't know if a lot of Indian people have that. Uh, the chapter cell number is nine-two-eight, uh, uh, nine-two-eight-six-seven-three-eight-zero-zero-four, that's the.
Six-seven-three.
Six-seven-three.
Six-seven-three. Eight-zero-zero-four.
It's, so, nine-two-eight-six-seven-three-eight-zero-zero-four. You can text, you can call, you can, uh, voicemail on that one. And that one, you know, goes, this is, I'm twenty-four-seven, so if you want to, you can have your, and go back forward, um, all can give a message. So, but if you have any questions, I'm here most of the time, but nine, can leave a message. So, yeah. I had somebody ask me that question, and I just told them to go ahead and get that application. And then we might be able to be that, if the cost of that subject. I noticed that.
Okay, thank you, Earl, for the information. Although, I'm gonna go ahead and give it to, um, Polita, Polita here, um, to give us, um, what she's here for.
My name is Jay Wonderful, Indian, Shanday, Chantow, Nashua. In the Yen Yen Day, um, can you ask me if I told the district Johnson O'Malley, Indian Education Committee? I'm seeking support from our chapter, since you guys have, last school year, you guys had eleven students. Attended the Kiento School, so you are eligible for an at-large member. So I will be, um, representing Chantow and Insurrection House, if you guys have approved the resolution today. Um, the Johnson O'Malley, um, in short, we call it J O M, is, was passed in nineteen thirty-four by President Johnson. And, and nineteen seventy-five, the Indian Self-Determination Education Assistant, which allowed the Navajo Nation to get direct funding for the Johnson O'Malley. And within that, there was a Title II, and that, um, allowed for current involvement. So that became the Indian Education Committee, which, um, right now, with the Kiento White School District, the committee is under, um, no longer allowing parent involvement. Um, so I, um, as a committee, there is four of us, we have one from Chantow Chapter, um, Old Jacob Chapter, Ben Hoto Chapter, and Chantow. And under the, um, Code of Federal Regulations, C F R thirty-five, two-seven-three, that mandates that the school must have an Indian Education Committee, which, um, is their parents. And they're awarded every school year by how many students, major students they have within the school. So like last year, or twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, Kiento White School was awarded a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents. And January of this year, they were, they had, um, an additional nineteen thousand dollars that was, um, given to the school. And they go into different, um, they, we fill out an education plan, and the money is then budgeted into each, um, education plan. And they also, um, give supplemental support of eyeglasses, A C T, S A T test fees, graduation cap and gown, um, school supplies, and college course test fees. And as of April of this year, the, um, superintendent of the school um, removed all the parents for unknown reasons. And we are trying to work on getting back into the committee, so we are also working with our council delegate, Mr. Henry Daniels. And, um, we are waiting for the Health Education Services Committee to give us a meeting date to, like, the legal, also in Wonder Rock. And I kindly asked you for your support in passing the resolution today to, um, support, um, us to get their parents back involved to the school. Thank you.
Again, um, this floor, we're explaining, uh, the resolution, the resolution is on number nine.
Okay, we next have, um, Hoconino County District Five, Publicity Office, Alicia. Are you online? On once? Nope? On twice? Three times? Okay, we're gonna go on ahead. There's nothing under old business, so we come to new business, which is, um, the resolutions. We'll start with resolution number one.
Okay, so some of you guys have the budget with you guys in your hand, and again, due to the issues with printer and all that stuff, I only had the ability to print so much. So currently, uh, again, you guys can look for this stuff on the Navajo Nation Win System. Just type in, go into Google, type in Navajo Win System, and it should bring up the, um, the budgetary items for Navajo Nation. So again, this is open to everybody. Uh, you can look at all the other chapter houses that, that reconcile our stuff, so. Um, as of this moment, right now, we have, you know, our general fund of six thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. And our personnel and travel, again, that's sixty-two thousand, forty-six dollars and thirteen cents. Our trust, the, our trust claim funds.
All these budgets, they don't use it for.
Sorry, hold on. Um, there's two thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We have the summer youth employment of ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents. Our house discretionary funds is nineteen thousand, seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. And then our local government's grant, or local L G A grant, which is five thousand eight hundred and one hundred, five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and sixty-seven cents. Chapter officials stipend, we have a total of eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and three cents. Our scholarship general fund, which is thirty, three hundred and fifty, and our scholarship claim fund, it was five thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Our P E P is, the, P P, P E P is five, fifty-one thousand, ninety-six dollars and five cents. Veterans is three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Emergency is twenty-three thousand, three hundred, thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Navajo Nation sales tax is a total of seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-one cents. Capital Improvement Fund, which is zero dollars. Agricultural Infrastructure Fund is thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Unhealthy food tax, forty-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine seven cents. And then nothing else after that, bringing us a total of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred, twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. That is reconciled as of earlier this month.
Okay, so, do I have a motion?
Right now, uh, we. Second. Prisoe Sose. Okay, questions, comments, concerns? But in a way, yeah, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands, raise them up high. Oppose? Abstain. Okay, T B K two zero two three dash one nine eight dash zero zero one passes with twenty-two, approval, zero opposed, eleven abstain. Chair not voting. Okay, number two.
Number two, T B K two zero two three dash one nine eight, uh, accepting and approving the monthly carriage receipt for deposits for June two, June two thousand twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents.
Okay, you have a motion? James? Listening, second? Okay, we have a motion and second, any questions, comments, concerns? Keep best, so we get a young, pleasant, um, vessel, plenty of water and all that, we, um, tell you up, that's how much was for the one. No questions, comments, or concern, call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, raise your hands. Oppose? Okay, T B K two zero two three dash one nine eight dash zero zero two passes with twenty-one approval, zero opposed, and twelve abstain. Chair not voting. Number three?
Approving, um, T B K two zero two three dash one nine eight, uh, zero zero three, approving and supporting the budget transfer of three thousand, three hundred dollars and twenty-eight cents. I'm sorry, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents from fund account zero one six four zero one, space rental to fund zero one six six one five bank service charges. And to fund zero one six three zero zero office supplies to cover shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Okay, motion? Second? Okay? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, up and, okay, yeah, call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, and keep them raised until, um, we can finish. I think that was, uh, I mean, vote. Oppose? Abstain. T B K two zero two three dash one nine eight dash zero zero three passes with approval, uh, twenty approval, zero opposed, thirteen abstain, chair not voting. Uh, number four?
T B K two zero two three dash one nine eight, uh, zero zero four, approving and supporting the housing discretionary assistance to eligible applicants in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion? Okay, over? Second? Second? Virginia? Okay, questions, comments, and concerns?
Uh, it says right there, 450. Uh, I think it's just one. Yeah, just one person. Do you have a question, Julie?
No.
Oh, okay.
Let's move right to the vote.
You have a question?
Yeah. Uh, this year, I eat that 250. Is the issue?
Um, it, it just depends on what, what kind of housing discretionary they, they like for, whether it's, um, supplies to renovate, or sewer, or, hey, wait, hold on, under housing. Um, there's other ones that are listed under housing discretionary that you can apply for, which Earl was telling us earlier. They did that, um, they, they, so, it varies. The, the amount will vary depending on what it is, what they need this. Okay, call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor, raise your hands.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Uh, TBK 2023-198-004, passes with 22 approval, zero opposed, 12 abstained, chair not voting. Number five.
TBK 2023-198-005, approving and supporting the subject case, subject training services assistance to eligible applicants in the amount of $250.
Okay. Uh, motion? Uh, second?
Hey, back, get him off, huh?
One, one, one. The, uh, second, uh, he's not allowed, I'll tell you that.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
Uh, my brother charged 68, maybe he's not a subject.
Huh?
My brother charged 68. This, uh, person, uh, paid for the rest?
Uh, probably. Yes. Uh, they can be helped up to the maximum of 250. Other the rest of the, they pay for the charges.
So they thought of the higher type of it.
Um, but, they're, they, they do contact their own subject team, whoever's gonna do it. So whoever they, they contact to do that, um, that's how much we help them. What other the rest of the, I'll be, I'll be generally say. Um, you have any question?
Yeah, um, there's something saying, um, who, if they, um, just their industry, they want the A D issue, unless you're, or it's just 68.
Well, it varies. I don't know, it's like, uh, sometimes they take it to, when it's like, when it's up, that's where they charge it more. Not to put it so, but, uh, I, I think, um, they, it's a change.
And the, the prices varies on where they take, um, where they take the sewer to be dumped. And there, there's one in Page, there's one in Willows, um, I don't know what other places there are. So it'll probably just depend on where they take to, um, get, get their tank dumped. Any other questions, comments, or concern? Billy?
If, uh, it's continued, it's, uh, seventy, you move, or, or, or?
They got it.
So like, what's it, oh, they can't do it.
Um, the last time we heard, they weren't able to, so we can check with them again.
I'll ask them why, they're, uh, are not going through their water and, and that didn't care. Seven, which they have to, oh, yeah. And we can't do it.
Okay.
Five hundred dollars.
Or five hundred, huh?
The manager, uh, you know, who, five hundred dollars, I don't see that, it's, 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 it's. They, uh, I don't know, because they, there is.
Okay. We'll, we'll double check on that.
Okay.
Jamie, did you have a question?
Um, is still need a three, couple of scores?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this, um, uh, the one, I thought, uh, the, 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 that's over. It's, I showed that, um, having a cap or, sure, it's just, apparently, uh, they want to, they want to get the, uh, uh, traffic. It's right now, it's a, um, not before, not, not of us that are, are well there.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, TBK 2023-198-005 passes with 27 approval. One opposed, eight abstained, chair not voting. Okay, number six.
Approving and supporting the budget transfer of $397.07 from 040-6352 to fund 040-6390, some other supplies and expenses to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Thank you. Alright, motion. Jamie? Second? Terry? Terry, I mean, why am I calling you Yarren? See, I make up names so better watch out. Terry, Terry. You want the change one?
Yeah, they call him Curly.
I just might call you Curly. Terry, Curly. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? If none, call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three. Twenty-three.
Opposed? And abstained. Okay, TBK 2023-198-006 is passed with 23 approvals, zero opposed, twelve abstained, chair not voting. Number seven.
TBK 2023-198-007 approving and supporting the budget transfer of $1,963.51 from Fund account 23-636414, place of disposable collections, and fund 236410, telephone expense, to fund 23-6314, natural gas, propane, to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Okay, motion. Great mouth, second? Terry?
Curly, Curly.
Or was it Perry, Curly, or?
Curly, Curly.
Alright, questions, comments, concerns? I then I have called for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Opposed? Okay, abstained. Alright, TBK 2023-198-007 passes with 25 approval, zero opposed, eleven abstained, chair not voting. Alright, number eight. Okay, number eight.
TBK 2023 National 198-008 approving and supporting the step salary increase for the Tapiqin Chapter Manager.
Okay, on this one, I would suggest that we paper this, only because we have to do the budget, we have to do the paperwork for it before we put it before the people. So, I'm gonna go ahead and knock through this one.
What are you talking about?
That increase.
That has to happen, no matter what.
Okay.
It's only, only if you want to.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and do this. Approving and supporting this step salary increase for the Tapiqin Chapter Manager. Do I have a motion?
Nancy. Nancy and Priscilla.
And who?
Priscilla.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, Priscilla, loud when you're clear.
Okay, please do this before the voice announcement. We are chapter manager.
Hold on.
We only did it for the, the salary increase for the year, remember Navajo Nation?
The Navajo Nation. The one that we did for the chapter manager, the increase that we did last year, was recommended by the council. A, because that's what they were doing. So, in order to do that, we had to do a resolution and paperwork for that so that they can get what the Navajo Nation wanted to give them. That was, that was done according to what the Navajo Nation Council wanted. That gave us a non step increase. Go ahead, Jamie. Oh, you're not voting yet? Okay, any other comments, concerns? Hold on.
I have a question, somebody asked how much the increase was.
The increase depends on what step he needs to have, and the next step that he's gonna go to, and on average, it's a dollar, a dollar fifty increase. And yeah, that's what the Navajo Nation has. But we can determine how much of a step increase he can, he can do. Yeah, that, that's the one I'm. Are you recommending something? Can you say it loud and clear so we can get it recorded?
Do you recommend more?
Yes. Alright, so recommendation is to?
We just, we just, yeah, the recommendation is just to get him his increase.
Yeah.
After that, we determine.
Yeah, recommendation is to give him an increase, so that's what we'll do. Alright, if there's no other questions, comments, or concerns, go ahead and put this to the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Thirty-five, thirty-five, forty-five, thirty-six.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, TBK 2023-198-008. Approved, thirty-six passes with thirty-six approved, zero opposed, zero abstained, chair not voting. Number nine.
Number nine, TBK 2023-198-009 approving and supporting one of the four as the new Navajo Nation Johnson O'Malley, Kianta Unified School District, Indian Education Committee, at-large member representing Chonto and Tapiqin chapters.
Okay, they young is for the lawyer in his own account, Johnson O'Malley, and to be at-large for Chonto in here. And then what they're working on is to get Kianta Unified School District to recognize IEC parent involvement. Because right now, they're, they're saying, or so, motion? Jamie and Colbert? Colbert? Okay, questions, comments, concerns? I then I, yeah, call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Nine, ten, eleven, twenty, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, TBK 2023-198-009 passes with thirty-three approvals, zero opposed, four abstained, chair not voting. Number ten.
TBK 2023-198-0010 approving and supporting the budget transfer of $1,267.91 from 1006608, training and tuition fees, to fund 106202, traveling expense to cover the shortfalls due to to date that were not anticipated.
Okay, motion? Ronaldo? Ronaldo for the second? Colbert? Sherman? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, for call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your hands, raise them up high.
Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty.
Okay, opposed? Abstained? Okay, TBK 2023-198-010 passes with thirty approvals, zero opposed, seven abstained, chair not voting. And then we don't have an eleven, so that concludes our resolutions. I thank you very much for your participation. And Mr. Sherman, way to get involved. Again, um, get involved, motion, second, getting your votes counted. So, again, second, again. Right now, we come to the reports. As the chapter president report, what we did, attend some meetings, one A ARPA funds, which Earl was talking about earlier, and else ARPA funds money, and projects here at the chapter that. We hope for the legislation for that is on the agenda for this week for the council meeting. A C wants to prove that the projects that are on there, A, that's what's gonna be starting to work on, be worked on. As you all know, Navajo Nation, Navajo Nation is slower than a turtle, maybe like a sloth. You know what a sloth is? There's this animal that's called a sloth. They probably goes, what, one foot in about thirty minutes? Navajo Nation is like that in most, in some of these projects. E project under the ARPA, it has deadlines. Next year is the deadline for all projects to be approved by the council and funded. And then in two, twenty-three, in three years, in twenty-six, these projects has to be all done, and the money for that were approved for these projects have to be expended. So, it's just around the corner. I've got the, every day, there's a delay, cut shorter the time for these projects being completed. So, when you think the legislation, it is going through the Navajo Council. Our council delegate has that legislation so that we can be funded, approved, funded, and started, started on, so that we can expend that money like it's supposed to. So, A, there are other projects that are not under, is still under ARPA, but not under our, not under the council delegate, not part of the 2.4 million that was for our area. A, still, they're underway, they're being funded, they're being worked on. Paperwork is getting all gathered for those to, so A, so. Auto, there are some meetings that are coming up that pertain especially to ARPA funds. A C that will be attending this, those meetings are coming up and will be attending those. Auto, as far as here, all the available services are, Earl has talked about, the housing discretionary, the scholarship, as you saw the budget, we both have some funding in the scholarship for Chinahana, for this coming semester, so A, let them know that we, they have availability here to help them with their expenses. Nana, the other news that we have also is, I told you, I think I told you in the last chapter meeting, that we are gonna get a building, a new building for the head start. It is coming forth, plans are being made for that. Once they get all paperwork done and money is expended for it, just seeing new head start buildings on the way. Auto, within that project that they're gonna do, they'll clean up the head start area and even consider putting a new playground, the budget they've done to give me, so that's what they're gonna do. And I think one of the things we told them too is the road to, the access road to what needs to be fixed to. So, A, there is some, so that's a goal that give news that they had given us. So, the main reason why they wanna do that is so that they can have in-person students, in-person school again. None of the, not, not, not what they're doing now is going to each home. I think in-person schooling, hopefully they get it done before this school year starts. So, A, other than that, all the meeting schedules are right there, like Earl said. If you need a copy of the meeting schedules, you can ask for a copy over at the administration office. Auto, that's all for my, for my portion. There are a lot of other things, but Earl does a lot of the, we go to the meetings and we do a lot of advocating, we do a lot of So, and then we're trying to go forth as a certified chapter to be able. We're practicing the authorities that were given us under LGA certification. So, A, that's what we're moving forth with. And getting things in place so that we can get more things done for the, for our community.
Global, it's Jenzy, it's me, Vice President. I like to say little things about Earl also. We've built a lot of really strong relationships with a lot of other entities and others collaborating with other teams and making sure we're a real part of this year and years to come. I want you to know that I appreciate the opportunity to get as a vocal community and redesign this community. Because if you guys were here along before, you couldn't really speak with him, speak with anybody in the office. It was closed off, there was a window there. Now you guys can actually come and talk to him, anybody, anyone of us. Like they said, for along with the other team members, we wait to see how this community grows towards self-sustainability, we have to advocate for that. If you guys build your own businesses and develop your own appropriate other communities. It's hard to say, you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Jenzy.
Alright, thank you. Those guys don't know me, I'm Biller Curly. Jay, I am your chapter secretary treasurer. I attend the majority of the meetings that Geraldine and Earl has attended. We're, one, trying to get the ARPA legislation through and passed. And hopefully by this week, we'll have that pass resolution, and then we could go ahead and get our warehouse, our electrification projects, and then also renovation projects underway. Because like Geraldine stated, that we have until next, what, 2024 to allocate these funds until 2026, they have to be fully expended. And so, if we don't utilize all that funds back, you know, that the federal government provided us to get these projects underway, you know, we're just gonna have to take those funds back to the federal government. And so, what we're trying to do is really try to get everything in position, in place, to make sure that there's a smooth transition between project start to project completion. Another thing that we've been really advocating for is trying to get the road from 98116 all the way down, I'm sorry, Navajo Route 16 all the way down and recreated and paved. That's another one we're doing. This year in TUA, in Dot, is planning on demoing the pothole, you know, paved highway that's right there now. They're actually gonna extend it about three more miles and repave the entire way, three more miles from where it stops at right now. So, that, but the goal is, what we're trying to do is really get that road fully paved all the way to the tunnel. And so, because again, you got monsoon seasons coming up, you have, you know, winter coming up. We need to have that roadway available for everybody to travel on. Again, I've attended many of the meetings that David attended, I listened to council sessions and what's going on there. And also, I've been a part of a couple of the trends, the telecommunications broadband initiative that is being developed by the Co-Community County. We're planning on getting fiber optics from 98, using the 98 cord, they're all the way down to Flagstaff. And then we're also gonna try to get some over here from 116 all the way this way, and then also back up towards Page. So, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get some broadbands from fiber optics, internet, and all that good stuff up this way. There's currently already in TUA running their fiber all the way up to Monument Valley, Navajo Mountain, utilizing the 116, Navajo Route 16 corridor. But we're also wanting to get more fiber in here, that way it expands the hybrid meetings, the video teleconference meetings, the telehealth meetings, you know, all those stuff. That is all needed, and so, that is what us officials and what the chapter administration are working towards to try to get all these things in. So, some of you guys do know, that's what we're doing, the So some of you guys do know, that's what we're doing, the Kupsi is also working on getting to that initiative as well. And so that's what we're trying to do, progress the Tapiqin chapter, make it self-sustaining and pushing forward. So other than that, that's my report.
Thank you. And again. Otto. But did you, did you wanna say anything on behalf of the head start?
Um, for the head start, I'm still still pretty ready to open. And I'm still over there by myself. The ox models are ready to kick here and uh question. When the grant case of somebody on the street, I'm excited to apply and then I'm still a bachelor on the outside. So the teacher go a question like, oh, how are you getting that out of town? But they did, I did, so if you guys know, they're only little ones. And I don't know, do you still have a robot for me? The one I gave you.
Earl, we have um head start moment for him, so the office, I'm moving.
Yeah, I've been reading some here. Other than that, for us, they have a Facebook online, Navajo Nation head start, and then enroll the little ones.
So if you have little ones, you can enroll them in head start, three to five-year-olds. Otto, again, in addition, we've called it um resolutions, um called it in the dark, uh we may not convey lunch that into your community, oh, come, you you talked about it, sorry. Sometimes I get tongue-putted here. So, um, but again, in addition, we've called it, ah, so Hala, your involvement is crucial to this meeting too. Otto, uh, you see, I'm a happy, you get up, Otto, um, the we welcome that. Hala, um, we all want to have a such a good, vibrant, thriving community. Um, I don't want to be one to say, we're getting there. No one is either, then the other one, because sometimes Navajo Mountain says that a lot. We're over here at the end of the world, but I think that meeting is possible for us. As long as we plan for it, as long as we discuss it and say, sure, I would like to keep a meeting. There's that support and that can make, uh, anything is possible. So my role here is to make inscription house or Tapiqin a thriving, vibrant community. So A, very, very. Um, this will we will come to announcement, don't forget, next Monday is um food distribution here. We do always need volunteers. If you don't have anything to do and want to do something, help your community be here. Because this is um where the food distribution will be done. Um later, beyond, like in, Otto, they separate and put it into boxes. Otto, community's members, we hope, um we distribute them out to the community that that come by. So if you have want something to do on next Monday morning, be here um to help the community. Otto, planning meeting is August seventh. Chapter meeting is August fourteenth. District raising meeting is August fifteenth. Community meeting is August sixteenth. And then Western Navajo, Western Agency raising meeting was today's, so the next one is gonna be twenty-fourth? Or twenty-one, August twenty-one. Otto, proxy meeting, eight July twenty-eight, at the the last Friday of this month. So A, as far as our upcoming scheduling, um announcements. Okay. So this will conclude our meeting. Just remember, just remember that at the chapter meetings, we provide lunch for you. So, um, that's an enticement where you can come to our chapter meetings. So with this, I will conclude that we stand motion for German. Irene. Onan. Second? Um Mary Ellis. Okay. Meeting is gonna be adjourned at one thirty-three P M. If I save this time, all those in favor, raise your hands.
Thirty-six.
Oppose? Abstained? Okay, meeting is adjourned at like one thirty-three P M. If I save this time, like twenty-six approvals, zero opposed, zero abstained, chair not voting. Thank you very much, you all have a great day, and the rest of the week, be safe out there.